And welcome to this study session of the Pasco School Board of Directors. This afternoon, we will be focusing our study session on the District Strategic Improvement Plan, going over the plan from its inception and where it has brought us today, and then going over future steps. And Superintendent Whitney will lead us in that discussion.
So, good evening, Board President Brown, members of the Board. It's my pleasure to be in front of you tonight for a study session, or this afternoon, to talk about our current District Strategic Improvement Plan, kind of where we are in that process and some plans moving forward. So, the purpose is to provide you some background around our District Strategic Improvement Plan and articulate some contexts that really frame a suggestion that we have in how to handle the need to do some kind of engagement with our plan, and then give plenty of opportunity for you to engage in discussion, and then also collect questions and request for additional information that will help us move forward as district staff in a way that aligns with the Board's direction. So, when you think about a strategic plan or our District Strategic Improvement Plan, and really the why or the fundamental purpose of a district, or of any kind of strategic plan, but for us, the District Strategic Improvement Plan really serves as both an anchor and a compass. And it grounds our work and us as an organization in our shared values. It focuses our energy on what matters most, which for us is student learning and well-being, and provides a steady course, especially when there are shifting circumstances. And certainly, as a Board and superintendent team and as an organization and a community over the last 10 years, we've seen our fair share of shifting circumstances. And we're really right in the middle of some of those shifting circumstances right now with our current budget context. So, it's not just a roadmap. It's really a living commitment to ensure every decision that we're making is in alignment with, and our investments and actions are in alignment with, our responsibility to staff students in our community. Strategic plans become especially important in times of uncertainty. It helps us choose clarity over confusion, unity over division, and progress over paralysis. And because there is this organizational clarity and transparency, so if you think about our current context around having budget tensions, when we look at our strategic plan, it very clearly articulates large buckets of work and priorities that help us frame decision-making around where do dollars go or not go? And that this plan and our outrageous outcomes have been fully public-facing for a decade, or just under a decade. So, there's really organizational clarity around that, which, again, in times of uncertainty, really kind of anchors us to our fundamental purpose. So, we are grateful to have the strategic plan that we have and it to be in alignment with the Board's direction, which, when I came on as superintendent, was to have a District Strategic Improvement Plan or a Strategic Improvement Plan with goals that was easy to understand, public-facing, and that people knew and could articulate our goals. And so, I think if you asked employees in Pasco School District, they would know we have five outrageous outcomes. They may not be able to recite them verbatim, but they know they're around reading, math, on track for graduation, graduation, and connection with students. They might not be able to, like I said, say them the way I do, you know, verbatim, but I definitely, I do think people could articulate them. The District Strategic Improvement Plan is not just a piece of paper and four corners of a plan. It requires that if it's going to be an authentic foundation by which organizational leaders lead and teachers and employees function, there has to be cohesion, and everything we do has to align with it. So, I really like this graphic that we designed really early on in our journey to show that alignment from the outrageous outcomes to how we monitor the outrageous outcomes, to our District Strategic Plan, to our school improvement plans, which then are monitored by you as a Board through our state-of-the-school reviews. All of that is strategically aligned so that the work of the district is the work of the buildings, is the work of the Board. So, and I can tell a story on myself because it was a long time ago now, so I can't get in trouble. But back when I was a building principal and district staff would come and walk through the building, I would do the work. You know, all of a sudden, we're focused on the strategic plan. They would leave, and I would go back to doing the real work of the building. And I knew that was a culture in our district when I took over as superintendent. So, I worked really hard to ensure that there is alignment. And I think you can very clearly see that now when our leadership teams are presenting through the state-of-the-school reviews, that there is alignment and consistency across the district in our big, major focuses. And so, that was a tremendous body of work and a lot of very intentional planning that has got us to where we are around that. This current plan was designed and developed on a five-year implementation framework, which was different than the way plans had been done prior. Prior to that, they were typically on a three-year cycle. For us, ours was on a five-year cycle. Now, it also was disrupted by a year in COVID. So, it actually started in 2021. We put a pause in the work because of the pandemic. But the concept was that we spent a year kind of preparing the system to accept the strategic plan and have knowledge around it before we spent the middle three years of the plan launching the work and reevaluating the work based on our progress monitoring. And then this year is a land and replan, where we look at kind of landing the work, kind of identifying where we are, and in some kind of process to then replan for whatever the interval is going to be for the next plan. So, again, our strategic plan is rooted in our outrageous outcomes that set on this foundation of a belief that all students are capable of success, no exceptions, and our five 100% goals that, when combined, create a trajectory of success for students where they're reading on grade level in their language of instruction in third grade, passing algebra by the end of ninth grade, even though some do that in seventh or eighth. They're on track, our students are on track for graduation at the end of their ninth-grade year. They're graduating with a career path and having taken some steps to get there while they're with us, and then have meaningful connections and hope for their future. This document is the strategic plan. I know it's too small for you to read, so you have a copy in front of you that looks like this. It also lives in a poster that looks like this one and the one that's in the boardroom in every single one of our buildings in English and Spanish. And then, on the next slide, I just made a summary of what's unreadable under each goal. So, just under each goal here, you can see kind of those buckets of work. For example, mastery of third grade has four kind of large bodies of work that are pinned underneath third grade reading. They are about pre-K, core instruction, acceleration intervention, and highly trained and skilled staff. So, that's what this slide is for, is to summarize what's in that document that you can't see on the slide. For people that are at home, you have a copy in front of you. So, when you look at kind of the large buckets of work under our goals, you see some real similarities, especially across mastery of reading, success for algebra, and on-track for graduation around focusing on pre-K, core instruction, acceleration intervention, and training for teachers. When you get to graduation, graduating with career path, you see us focusing on high school and beyond planning, student-centered pathways, and partnerships with industry and higher education. And then, when you get to meaningful connections, you see our dignity through our cultural belonging work being centered under that goal, our systems of support for social-emotional learning and behavior, and then, again, having highly skilled and trained staff to work with our students around those meaningful connections and hope for their future. Our strategic plans, foundations, is our mission statement, which is putting students first, make learning last a lifetime, celebrating academics, innovation, and diversity. And interwoven with our values, again, like I said, of students are capable of success, no exceptions, our outrageous outcomes, which are those aspirational 100% goals, which sends the community and our system the message that we believe in all kids. And then, this concept of We Are Pasco, which is our collective commitment to stand in the gap and bridge of the divide for students by amplifying student voice and centering belonging. And then, the concept of hope, which isn't kind of that passive hope, like, oh, boy, I'm going to stand around and hope things get better. But it's this active form of hope where we instill in our students that your future can be better than your current circumstances and that we'll help you and support you to find the agency to make that happen. This, our belonging efforts are really grounded in the concept that belonging is a precursor to achievement. So, students that do not feel like they belong to a system will not achieve at the same levels as they will if they don't feel like they belong. They won't achieve at the same levels as they would if they did feel like they belong. So, this graphic is from Dr. John Crown Apple's work. And as a system, we've really leveraged this over the last three to five years. And our systems have all received training and are implementing the concepts of building a culture of dignity through belonging into kind of their foundational way of being. We also embrace the concept of the philosophy that language is an asset through our one-way and two-way dual-language programs. And we center and highlight hiring bilingual staff and then offering translation services for the languages, written in the major languages that we serve, which is English and Spanish. But most, all of our tools have some form of electronic translation. We recognize that's not as good as having individual translators, but we also recognize that for the multitude of languages that you could have in a community, that it is better than not having translation services at all. We also, over the course of the strategic plan's life, had an opportunity to do some narrowing of its focus in partnership with the teachers' union. We had what was called the district learning team. We went out and did a big listening tour. And the system helped us identify these five key priorities, which is a multi-tiered systems of support for social-emotional learning, high school and beyond planning, avid professional learning communities, and expansion of our dual-language programs. So, those also become kind of a filter by which we make decisions and prioritize resources. So, I'm going to stop there and answer any questions or is there anything I can clarify? Really, the intention there is just to provide some background that underpins how we got to the strategic plan and maybe some of the philosophical beliefs that shape what's on the page. Is there any questions I can answer?
There's no question on this one. It's different on the bottom here than what you had up on the screen.
Yeah, what I put up on the screen is a summary of each of those buckets. So, like, all the words in the first bullet under reading is really about pre-K. So, I just put the word "pre-K" on the slide just for clarity brevity, and so, there wasn't 1,000 words on that slide. So, I just did a one-to-two-word summary of each of those bullets on the slide.
So, this is the actual whole?
Correct. Yeah, and it truly was just an effort to not overcrowd the slide and give a summary of what's on that page.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other clarifications, questions?
I have a quick question, Assistant Whitney. So, are the Journey of a Graduate, like competencies, if I call them, are they part of the strategic plan or are they different?
You know what, that's a great question. So, the Journey of a Graduate work was done after the inception of this plan. And actually, and it's not on the tools that we have readily available for us to integrate into our plan, but it certainly should be. So, the next step for the Journey of the Graduate work is to align it with our strategic plan. So, thank you for bringing that up. Noe? Anything else? I'll write that down so I don't forget.
Cheryl?
Yes?
Along that lines, how does Journey of a Graduate differ from high school and beyond?
So, Journey of a Graduate are the core competencies or the durable skills that we want every student to be able to exhibit as a student in Pasco School District. And you may have been hear about them as called kind of soft skills. So, they're like dispositions or ways of being. Whereas, the High School and Beyond Plan is individualized to each individual student up against their interests and develop a step-by-step plan for how they'll move through our system in preparation for whatever comes after high school for them. So, the High School and Beyond Plan is very individualized to an individual student, whereas the Journey of a Graduate is core competencies we want every Pasco kid to be able to exhibit, like collaboration, empathy, problem-solving. Does that help?
I'm curious, where does Journey of a Graduate begin at exactly? Because I don't think I've ever actually heard of it, really. Like, it's ringing a bell, but I haven't heard it.
Yeah, so remember last year when Mrs. Goble came to the Superintendent Advisory Council? She came like three different times and gave updates on that work?
Oh, okay.
That's the Journey. It used to be called Portrait of a Graduate.
That's, okay.
But then, I think we didn't like the terminology Portrait of a Graduate, and now it's Journey of a Graduate.
Okay.
Yeah. So, as I said, the current District Strategic Improvement Plan, the foundation of what you see in front of you was actually done and completed by Evergreen and Associates in collaboration with a really deep stakeholder engagement and approved by the Board in June of 2015. Since then, stakeholders have engaged in a variety of ways to make adjustments or additions to the original plan. For example, the outrageous outcomes or the five priorities where we engaged with a district learning team in collaboration with the teachers' union and went out and did a listening tour. So, the plan has evolved from that original 2015 work that was done through stakeholder input that was really facilitated internally by staff. The latest revision, as I described, has that five-year implementation framework, which was disrupted by COVID. And again, this is our land and replan year. So, when you think about a land and replan year, there's a number of ways to move forward with doing that, two of which I'm going to talk about here to kind of frame the district staff's suggestion. So, you could do a full-scale, comprehensive redesign and rebuild, which really is about kind of looking at all of the pieces I just described and doing a really broad stakeholder engagement around all of the pieces, or a strategic review to refresh or kind of tune up your plan. So, a full-scale redesign or rebuild is, like I said, that really, it's a comprehensive process. It reopens the district mission, vision, strategic priorities, requires that broad stakeholder involvement, and is a significant, it takes significant time and resources, and is typically done by an outside third party. And I will say that when you engage an outside third party, probably the lowest price tag you're going to see is about a $20,000 price tag, but typically, it's a $40,000 to $60,000 price tag when you engage an outside third party to come in and do that work. In contrast, a strategic review or refresh or tune-up is a lighter process, and it's really designed to adjust timelines, update metrics, realign initiatives, while keeping the existing visions and priorities intact and is typically done by internal staff. So, the context I want to provide here is really about the suggestion I'm going to make at the end of this, so I'm not going to bury the lead. And the suggestion that we have as district staff is instead of engaging in this land and replan year, instead of engaging in a full-scale rebuild, we're really suggesting doing a tune-up. And I'm going to talk about why we're suggesting that. So, planning, and especially strategic planning for a big organization like this one, requires a level of credibility. And strategic planning is most effective when it can be linked to sustainable resources to support the implementation of the key priorities or the key actions identified by stakeholders. So, during times like we're experiencing where there's financial tension, thinking about doing a tune-up versus a rebuild really puts us in a position where our end result is a plan that we can afford and doesn't lose its credibility because there's a question whether or not there's the financial resources to do the things that are included in the plan. There's also kind of question around bandwidth and focus. So, you know, the bandwidth of an organization or the amount that leaders can take on or staff can take on, or even really the community can take on, especially in times of tension, is different than when there isn't. So, you know, those kind of bandwidth and focuses are finite. So, research around strategic planning warns about kind of overloading the system during times of tension. People are, it's difficult to dream about a brand-new home when your current house is on fire. Now, our house isn't on fire. We're having some financial tension, but I'm just using that as analogy. So, during times of high stress, like while we're dealing with financial tension, it's better to really focus on adaptive challenges or short-term planning scenarios, doing strategic adjustments to our current course versus changing courses completely. Stakeholder engagement is critical to a really authentic strategic plan development, especially when you're thinking about a rebuild. When we did the strategic planning in 2015, I happened to be a superintendent intern at the time, so I was pretty deeply engaged with that. And it was thousands, like 10,000 survey responses, like hundreds of people engaged in in-person meetings because you want to make sure that multiple perspectives are represented because this plan needs to be enduring and representative of your entire community, not just a small portion of your community. So, that authentic participation is really critical. In times like what we're experiencing now, when people are worried about the potential of not having positions not filled or federal funds not being reallocated that will impact jobs, is not an ideal time to get authentic participation. That then really leads into the next one, which is about that risk of short-term decisions driving long-term strategy. So, when people are functioning from kind of a scarcity mindset, there's not enough money, it could impact my job, the strategic planning focus could be kind of overshadowed by reactive nature versus really kind of what you want a strategic plan to be, which is long-range visioning that is, you know, aspirational, but then also has kind of the technical moves to get to those aspirations. So, the kind of environment is very important when you think about doing that full-scale rebuild versus a tune-up. So, because of all of these factors, we are suggesting to engage in a tune-up, not a rebuild, for all of the reasons that I just described. In addition, because the last time an outside consultant came in to engage around the strategic plan was 2015, if we were going to do a rebuild, I would be really recommending that an outside third party come in and do that. And in my opinion, now is not the time to be spending the money to do that. There are some real downsides to, I, and I'm not very good at very many things, but strategic planning is something I'm good at and I love doing. I could lead our organization through that process for free. The danger of me doing it is that I would inadvertently steer it by my presence in the process. That's why outside third-party people come in and do it. My title just alone influences the process. So, for that reason, organizations or districts typically use an outside third party. So, that would be my recommendation if we're going to do the rebuilds. And I just, at this point, not only do I not think the environment is the right environment, but just fiscally, I don't feel like that would be the place we would want to put our resources right now. So, instead, our recommendation is that we would focus on what we're calling a tune-up. We have a number of tools, and I'm actually frankly embarrassed that I didn't think about Journey of a Graduate, so I'm going to add it in here. And I have to tell you, I shared this with staff over the last couple of days, and they didn't think about Journey of a Graduate either. So, that's why we love working with student board representatives and board members, so that where we forget things, you can hold us accountable. So, we have a number of existing tools that could help us do this tune-up that already have had a lot of fingerprints on it. For example, we had AIR come in and do an audit around our MTSS framework. We have all of that feedback. There's also a needs assessment and Fidelity of Implementation rubric that would help us use academic, behavioral, and social-emotional learning data to take a look at the current work that's called out in the strategic plan and make some decisions about where we need to be spending time versus where we need to be prioritizing our focus. I also did a very comprehensive listening tour in '23, '24, where I went out to every building with three broad questions. They gave me information. We used thought exchange. I got thousands of responses from that. And then, what I learned from the thousands of responses is that I needed help from the broader organization to build some action plans about what to do about those things. And so, we stood up what we call the superintendents, not just me, but all superintendents, Employee Advisory Council last year. That council met all year. They dug into all of the responses from the listening tour and identified some key priority areas that you have in front of you in the document that looks like this. So, these are the action plans from the Employee Advisory Council. You also have a document that looks like this. It's a multi-page document. This is a summary of the findings from the superintendent's listening tour. So, these two documents are just designed for you to have more information about what is included in these existing tools that I just described. We also have the Journey of the Graduate work, which I'm super grateful that Noe surfaced. I've also, we also talked about, and as a Board, you gave feedback to Raoul and Sarah last spring about some operational department goal work that they're doing or are working on, which document is not here. Thanks. So, Sarah will provide that to you. So, after the operational departments got your feedback, they have been working through a process of starting to solidify those into some actionable next steps. And then, we have our Board Progress Monitor Report policy. And that's the policy where, as a Board, you have directed district staff to report to you about the outrageous, progress toward the outrageous outcomes. This is the place where we talked about when you approved the annual objectives, that we could do the academic benchmark metrics like you asked. So, this is where that would fall in. So, those are all of the existing tools that we have in place that would allow us to use those mechanisms to do the tune-up. And I think why this is important is what I would never want to do is tune up the strategic plan through only the lens of the superintendent or only the lens of the school board. We have, over the course of the last few years, we've engaged a lot of people already in work that needs aligned to the strategic plan. So, we would be able to move forward with these tools. There's already kind of what I call fingerprints on that work that we could use to do the tune-ups. And then, once conditions stabilize and the district's in a stronger position to engage stakeholders, we would absolutely be looking at building that longer-term durable strategic plan with the help of an outside consultant. And I would see that happening. I know we did a five-year strategic plan last time. I know Joey and I are, or Joey is fairly confident, yellow-light confident, that our current financial situation is kind of a three-year situation. And so, you know, maybe we just say that this tune-up is, we're going to just, like, in three years from now, so that we have kind of a goal for when the conditions would be stabilized and we'd be looking at doing that total rebuild of the plan. I think it's important to also note that when you do a full-scale rebuild, it requires that you go back and realign the entire system up against that new plan. So, you know how I went back and I started with that, this graphic right here? So, if we were to do a rebuild right now, we would be going back and realigning all of those pieces in the system so that we had alignment from the boardroom, what I call the boardroom, to the classroom. So, a rebuild isn't only about getting the plan completed. That's like the first step and in some ways, the easiest step. There's a gigantic, it's like the, have you ever seen the picture where there's an iceberg and you see just the type of iceberg? And then, there's the big gigantic stuff underneath? The plan is just the top of that iceberg. The rest of the alignment of the system is actually a pretty comprehensive and a pretty heavy lift. And I think it aligns with what I just said in that in terms of system capacity, like now's not the time for that. From capacity and really just kind of like the general affect of being able to have the bandwidth to kind of realign and be accepting of kind of full-scale change in a time of tension that makes it difficult on employees. So, I'm going to stop there and I'll answer any questions, any discussion you want to have, requests for additional information. What we talk about here will give me the information I need to then prepare a more narrowed report. narrowed report to give to you as a board in a future board meeting, and then eventually have you take action and say, "Michelle, this is what we want you to do." So, I really just wanted this to be an opportunity for you to ask questions, get access to information, request additional information, so that I can then start to frame some narrower conversations and move us toward a direction.
Can you describe again, who's been through this document?
I don't know which document.
This is the operations.
Yeah, so this document was originally, all of the operations departments, which are listed down the side, worked with their supervisory assistant superintendents, which is Sarah and Raul. They have been working through the process of identifying their goals and priorities. We shared those with you last spring during the study session. You gave us some feedback around what were the things you felt like were missing. Raul and Sarah have taken that information back to those departments. They've integrated that in and are moving towards solidifying these so that they can use these to underpin their work.
So, I just want to understand how this is all going to fit together, all these different puzzle pieces?
Get it.
Because I'm not sure if I totally understand. I'm great with a refresh. I think that will work great. This is just operations. It's a part that's missing from this.
Correct.
So, you're going to figure out how to put this into this?
Correct.
This is about how to address the needs of our employees, of the different system things that need, I mean, we always need to be aware of what's going on, and this is what this is, is having a finger on the pulse of what's going on in the district and how to improve that as it applies to this.
Correct.
Okay. So, and that will all be a part of the refresh plan to address some of these needs, as well as make sure we're getting closer to our goal of 100% of our students are, you know, all of these different things.
Correct.
In addition to somehow putting operations into this plan, even though there's already five goals here?
Right.
Is this going to add a sixth goal?
We don't know yet.
You don't know?
We're really struggling with that, too. We've, I mean, I've gone so far as like Googling other districts, what are other districts doing? Like, we're not 100% sure yet. And that's where, once we have a clear picture from you as a board, that you'll support a refresh versus a rebuild, then I can go back with staff and start talking about what does a refresh process look like, all those pieces. So, we definitely have planning to do once we have clear direction from you. The piece I would add, and because I don't want to forget it, is the more granular academic benchmark data that you've asked for is also part of this refresh under the Board Progress Monitoring Policy that the board has, you know, you have governance over that. That's where you get to tell us as a staff how you want us to report academic progress to you. So, that's the other piece. It's not on a document, but I think the summary you just made is exactly perfect. That's exactly how those pieces fit together.
Thank you. And that was the last piece that I wanted to add. I want to make sure that granular data is there. And I know we have talked about, but I would love to see us above average in all of our different demographics. I just think it's a wonderful goal. I don't think it's fair to put us up against Bellevue when the poverty levels are so very different. Our ELL levels are so very different. And those are two big things that really affect student learning when you don't know the language and when there's higher poverty. It's huge. It has a huge impact on learning. And so, comparing that with, you know, our higher-poverty kids with higher-poverty kids in the state of Washington, I just think it's an ideal way to see where we're at and to see where we can improve. And I think it's an ideal way for schools to see where they're at. So, I'm hoping that we really go that direction of really pushing ourselves to be above average in every area in the state of Washington because I have no doubt we can score there.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that feedback, Amy, and I agree. I just want to be clear about this. So, there are pieces of this refresh that will be done with staff, and there's documents that already have employee fingerprints on it. The part of this refresh that will be done directly in collaboration with the board are those academic data benchmarks, under a revision of that Board Progress Monitoring Policy, which is the board's policy. So, I'll definitely engage with principals and district staff to bring you a recommendation. But as a board, you'll have the approval authority of that. So, that's where those will get approved, and then we'll integrate those into the strategic plan.
Great. Thank you.
So, you'll have lots of opportunity to have input, feedback, like we'll engage in a lot of conversation around that because at the end of the day, the data that we're presenting to you and that we're using to monitor progress, that is the board's work in collaboration with the superintendent. So, that's how those decisions will be made.
And I personally love that sheet that we get from all, during the state of the school reviews. I mean, I don't know if it needs to be changed with this, but that was my favorite thing from last year. It was a really easy way to see how schools improved, and I just love that. I love how Mrs. Goble put the belonging work into it. I know we didn't start out with it and did it midstream, which is sometimes hard to do, but that was really valuable so that we had the reading, the writing, and the belonging work on that two-page document. It's wonderful.
Perfect. Gives us a good place to start.
Can you give us a timeline that we're looking at this whole process? Does it never stop?
So, so, once you give me direction, once you say, "Yes, Michelle, we want you," it's okay with us that you don't do a rebuild, you do a refresh, then my next steps would be to go back, look at what that process would look like, and then develop a timeline of when I feel like we could deliver certain things. So, for example, you know, engaging around the Board Progress Monitoring Policy, like I can start calendaring that, you know, fairly quickly. You know, building out the operational benchmarks, like I would collaborate with Sarah, and we'd identify when do we feel like that those departments could have that deliverable done. So, as soon as I know from you what direction you want me to take, I can start to build out an appropriate timeline. The goal would be to have this work done, but I feel like this work needs to be done by the end of the year. The 2526 is the land and replan year, so I feel like we need to have all the work done in board approval by the last meeting in June at the very latest. But it doesn't mean all the pieces will wait till the end of June. I think there's pieces of it that we would do throughout the year, but the whole plan, in my opinion, needs to be solidified and completed by the end of June.
Yeah, I'm fine with just tweaking it, not doing the full thing. So, I agree that this is a year just to adjust it.
Director Kennedy and Simmons, how are you feeling about it?
I agree with my fellow board members here. I think a refresh is a great idea. I think we spent a lot of money originally doing this, this plan, and I think it's worthy to use the foundation of it and the work that's been going on and just to continue it and add and tweak the things that need to be added, adding in the operations portion of it and then our deciding how we're going to do our metrics. But yeah, I completely agree that we should go forward just to refresh at this point.
I agree, my colleague Superintendent Whitney, that refresh is the way to go on this. And do you think, as of right now, that it could be possible to integrate and embed the operation goals within the five outrageous outcomes, either one or some or all of them under the "we will" sections of this format?
I'm not sure yet. I'm not sure yet, to be honest. Not sure. We truly have been grappling with what does that look like? And I don't know that we've landed in a good spot yet. I'm looking at Sarah. Yeah. But whatever we come up with is going to be awesome.
I have.
Because I'm competitive, and I'm going to figure it out.
Student board representatives, any feedback?
I agree with like all the board members. I was especially concerned that if we did with this full-scale redesign, we would lose our credibility. And I feel like a plan this big and a plan that like literally sits in every building of this school shouldn't lack credibility. So, I think tuning it up is the best decision?
Yeah.
I was a little bit concerned about when you said like 100 above everything else, like, are we going to achieve to be 100%? But with the plan that you've set in, and I feel like we will achieve to 100% now you guys are trying to do again. So, I agree with you on this.
I also believe we should move forward with the refresh rather than the rebuild. And looking at all of this data, it's obvious that there is, there's a lot of moving pieces here, and they're moving in a positive direction. And I don't feel like it would be at all a good choice for us to completely restart that. I think that Jessica had a really good point in that we have a really great plan, and why fix something if it's not broken? And I would love to see these plans through to fruition because I think there's some really great pathways here. I'm especially excited about what I'm reading in the Action Plans for Employee Advisory Council Recommendations for MTSS Handbook, that I imagine would be something that would be universal among all the buildings, so there's no confusion around how we implement MTSS in Pasco School District, which I, and that is a common thread throughout a lot of these items. And so, that is, I'd love to see that work through. And I think that the plan that you put together for the, from the superintendent listening sessions is embedded in this as well. And so, really, we've listened to stakeholders, and there's a lot of just time and effort and money put into this already. And again, if it's not broken, then we don't need to fix it. We just need to keep on working on it. And so, I think, like you said, Superintendent Whitney, because of our fiscal situation right now and because of just the outlook right now with, I guess, uncertainty around federal dollars and just the, I think we, as a district, have a really good strategic plan. So, want to keep on seeing it through. So, it sounds like we are unanimously directing you to go ahead and do.
Yes. Perfect. I appreciate the clarity. I also heard in terms of my next steps in coming and kind of, because we usually, big topics like this, we have an opportunity to talk more informally in a study session than I typically do a report, so that we're being transparent and public-facing in a board meeting about kind of a summary of what we did here, the decision that the board has made and the direction that you have given. And then, we, in this particular case, then we'll also have it an action item, either as an action item or on the consent agenda where we memorialize the direction that you've given us. When I report to you next, I can talk about kind of the why behind the refresh versus rebuild. I'm hearing the desire from the board for a timeline of, you know, when we feel like this is going to play out. Maybe some more kind of flushing out of the operational goals, maybe some kind of, maybe a tiny bit more on the data, although I don't want to get bogged down in that because that will come in later presentations. Is there anything else that you would like to see in my next presentation? And this isn't the only time you can tell me. I know that this is a little unfair to ask you because you haven't had a lot of time to process, but if there's anything you can think about right now that you'd like me to hit on in the next presentation, you can let me know now or just let me know between now and the next board meeting.
Superintendent Whitney, just a question. Would the refresh, would the refresh focus in part on whether revisions to the "we will" sections will be needed to be done?
So, I am not envisioning, but again, I don't make these decisions by myself. I'll be working with teams. I'm not envisioning that what says like the bullet that talks about pre-K, I don't envision that will change. What I envision is there's going to end up being specificity under each of those that aligns with all of the documents you just saw. So, I don't think the bulleted language will change. I think you'll see more specificity under the bullets, much like what you saw when I presented the annual objectives to you. The "we will" statement was there, but then there was little, like more specific bullets under the "we will" statements. That's what I envision might happen, or what I envision will happen. I also don't want to predetermine the outcome of the process because often, students and staff have better ideas than I do. So, I guess the short answer, I don't see those bullets changing.
One thing I'd like to see on this document and other documents is when there's abbreviations there, that you put a footnote saying what it is.
Yeah, yes. We work really hard for things that are board-facing to do that. These are examples of internal employee documents that I wanted you to have, and your point is well-taken. We do, we do, when we know it's going to the board, we try really hard not to use abbreviations, but.
Do we still have the, you used to have a list of abbreviations?
Glossary.
That you gave the board?
Yeah. I know. I can.
We got one at WASTA in our training.
I can dig it out.
So, when you, board members go to their onboarding training.
But I would find when I use it, it's still not there.
Director Norberg, when we go to our WASTA training.
I know, I know. We do try hard on board reports and written communications directly to the board. Internal technical documents, we're not as good about not using the abbreviations. So, I appreciate the feedback and point well-taken. Anything else I can provide in the next presentation to make your governance job easier?
It doesn't sound like it's Superintendent Whitney.
Awesome. Well, thank you for your help.
Thank you very much for.
I am excited to do this work. One of my very favorite things in the universe to do is a superintendent of strategic planning. So, thank you for the clear direction. I think we have some really amazing tools to use that will just help retune our plan and make it even more relevant and transparent and meaningful for people to implement. So, thank you for your time, energy, and effort to making this process awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. That will adjourn this session of the study session of the Pasco Board Directors. We will reunite here at 6:30 for our regular board meeting.